Okay, Brad.
All right. Welcome, everybody. Move the screen over. I'd like to call to meet, uh, call, excuse me, I'm Brad Walker, Chair of the Boston Landmarks Commission, uh, and I would like to call, uh, to order this meeting of the Boston Landmarks Commission on June 10th, 2025. I think it is 6:05 PM. Thank you for your patience. President, our Commissioners Jacques Freeman, Orlando, Ganyo, Amadeo, Hart, Ward Hyatt, Haney, and myself. Did I miss anybody? All right. Also with us are Boston Landmarks Commissioners, uh, excuse me, Boston Landmarks Commission staff members, Joe Cornish, who is Director of Design Review, Jennifer Gogler, who is an architectural historian, Elizabeth Sherva, who is the Executive Director of the Boston Landmarks Commission, Kathy Kateridis, who is the Director of the Office of Historic Preservation, and Sarah Lawton, who is a Preservation Assistant. You can participate in this hearing by going to the Zoom meeting link posted in our agenda online at zoom.us/j/97518307312 or by calling 301-715-8592 and entering the meeting ID, which again is 97518307312. You may also submit your comments to us during this hearing by email at blc@boston.gov. In accordance with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, including the March 28th, 2025 Amendment extending the suspension of these provisions until June 30th, 2027, we are conducting this meeting online. To ensure public access to the deliberations of the Boston Landmarks Commission, the public may access this call through telephone and video conferencing. This hearing is being recorded. All conversations between Commissioners should be audible to the public in attendance until the hearing has been adjourned. I would ask now if there are any media or elected officials present that you identify yourself and state your name, title, and affiliation. You'll need to be unmuted to do that, and you need to raise your hand in the Zoom platform to do that. So I'll give people a second to find that function, and, uh, I know we have some people here, uh, that are public officials at least.
And should I go ahead and introduce myself? Hi, everyone. Um, I'm Representative Samantha Montano. I represent the 15th Suffolk, which is most of Jamaica Plain, uh, back of the hill in Edgerton.
Thank you. I can't see who else is unmuted. I see Sandra's story with her hand up. Or Bonnie Dulane. Or Anna Calderon. Liz, I think you're muted.
Liz, I think you have to meet them co-hosts.
Yep. Sandra, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi there. Uh, this is Bonnie Delon, Chief of Staff for City Councilor Ben Weber, who is City Councilor who represents, uh, Jamaica Plain in West Roxbury.
Thank you.
I need the host to unmute me.
You're unmuted.
Hi, I'm Sandra's.
Sorry. Go ahead, Sandra.
I'm, I'm from the Jamaica Plain, get that? I'm a columnist there.
Thank you.
Anna?
I guess we need to tell people they need to unmute themselves, and you're allowing that function. Okay.
Yes.
Hi, everyone. Anna Calderon, um, Chief of Staff for Counselor Alarj Henry Santana. Thank you.
I think we started to hear from Bonnie.
We did.
Bonnie, can you unmute yourself?
Hi there. Sorry, forgot to lower my hands, uh, with Counselor Weber's office. Already spoke.
Got you. Okay. All right. I think that takes care of public officials and press. Thank you all very much. And we will, I will briefly read into the uh, record, the, uh, tonight's agenda, just so people know in what order we're, we're taking things. We're going to start with the ratification of meeting minutes, uh, from our last meeting on May 27th, 2025. We're looking at, uh, two, uh, petition study reports, designations for prospective new landmarks. The first is Old South Meeting House, uh, where we will take a vote to accept a study report and a vote to designate. Uh, we will then look at 19 Kenton Road. Uh, that will only be a vote to accept a study report. We're going to defer the vote to designate because there is quite a bit of public comment on that one. I want to make sure we get everything, uh, and that is the end of voting matters. We move on to staff updates, uh, and a projected adjournment of 8:00 PM. So I'll move to the first meeting agenda item, the meeting minutes of May 27th, 2025, were distributed to Commissioner members prior to the meeting. And I open the floor for Commissioners' comments or corrections, uh, on those meeting minutes. All right, I will accept a motion to accept the meeting minutes.
We'll make that motion. Jeffrey Haney.
Thank you, Jeffrey. And a second, please.
I'll second Brad. Justine.
Thank you. And give me just a second. I gotta see who's, I think we are oversubscribed. One, two, three.
And Brad, David Baraducci joined us as well.
Thank you. Hello, David.
Hi.
All right. So, uh, voting would be alternate Commissioners, Ganyo, Amadeo, Hart, and Ward Hyatt. And I'll start with Commissioner Jacques.
Yes.
And Commissioner Freeman.
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Orlando.
Yes.
Commissioner Baraducci.
Yes.
Commissioner Ganyo.
Yes.
Commissioner Amadeo.
Yes.
Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Thank you, Chris. Uh, Commissioner Ward Hyatt.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Uh, so the meeting minutes are affirmed, and we move on to our first designation. Uh, so tonight we are considering the designation of the Old South Meeting House at 310 Washington Street as a Boston Landmark. The Boston Landmarks Commission is required to hold a public hearing on all proposed designations following the completion of a study report, which describes the significance of the property and the standards, standards and criteria by which future changes can be evaluated. The study report is made available for public review and comment for at least three weeks before the hearing. The purpose of the hearing is to hear the findings of the study report, to hear testimony from interested parties, and to vote on the proposed designation unless the Chair decides to extend the vote to a later date so that the Commission can acquire more information. I would now ask, uh, Boston Landmarks Commission Staff Historian Jennifer Gogler to make a brief presentation summarizing the findings of the study report for Old South.
Thank you, Brad. On March 10th, 2020, the Boston Landmarks Commission accepted a petition to study the designation of the Old South Meeting House in downtown Boston as a landmark under Chapter 772 of the Acts of 1975 as amended. On May 20th, 2025, the Boston Landmarks Commission posted a study report on the proposed landmark. I will now read a summary from the study report. The Old South Meeting House is nationally significant for its association with events in Boston that led to the American colonies revolt in 1775. Most notably, the building was the site of large public meetings following the altercation on March 5th, 1770, that became known as the Boston Massacre, and also as the staging ground for the Boston Tea Party on December 16th, 1773. Additionally, the Old South Meeting House is nationally significant for its association with the history of historic preservation. The Old South Meeting House is associated with several outstanding historical personages in American history. Members of its congregation include Phyllis Wheatley, Samuel Adams, Jame Otis, William Dawes, and Benjamin Franklin. Originally constructed in 1729 to 1730, the Old South Meeting House is also nationally significant as a rare example of a colonial church that combines an early Georgian exterior influenced by Christopher Wren's work with the traditional interior proportions and seating plan of a 17th century four-square meeting house. Uh, the Old South Meeting House was constructed by Joshua Blanchard, who was a master mason, who also erected Fannuel Hall. For all of the above reasons, Boston Landmarks Commission staff recommends that the Commission designate the Old South Meeting House as a landmark under Chapter 772, and further recommends that the boundaries of the designated landmark correspond to the three assessors parcels shown on the map. As you see here, it includes the parcel of Old South Meeting House itself, as well as an alley to the north and, and another parcel immediately to the east. The purpose of including these parcels in the designation is to protect the Old South Meeting House, which has historical and architectural significance at a national level. At these additional parcels, Commission review shall focus on presenting, preventing adverse effects to the Old South Meeting House and shall be limited to any new construction, paving, or fencing, or any physical attachments to the Old South Meeting House. Um, and then, of course, uh, the designation would, um, include the main parcel, which is, um, the focus of the standards and criteria that have been prepared to guide future physical changes to the property in order to protect its integrity and character. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Jennifer. Um, can you tell us, please, has, uh, any public, uh, excuse me, any written public feedback been received?
Yes. Um, in 2020, after the petition was submitted, the Commission received a letter of support from Revolutionary Spaces, which is the owner of the building, and from City Councilor Ed Flynn. The Commission also received a letter this week in support of designation from Counselor Coletta Zapata. And I also wanted to bring to the Commission's attention that, um, the Commission also received a suggestion from historian Jeff Cronin to incorporate a 2021 report by Old South Church's archivist Emily Ross titled "Report on Members of Color at Old South Church and Members Who Enslaved People of Color." Um, this is a really remarkable report. It provides names and biographical details for dozens of Old South's, uh, members of color, both enslaved and free, who were members of the church between 1696 and 1773. And this overlaps with the time that the Old South Church congregation worshipped at the Old South Meeting House. Um, so, um, if it wishes to do so, the Commission has the option to vote tonight to accept the study report with the proviso that this report is attached as an addendum. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Jen. Um, so now we move on to, um, verbal testimony. We first hear from, from public and then, uh, Commissioner deliberations, and we take public testimony in a specific order. If you wish to testify, it sounds like a very formal word, if you wish to comment, uh, you need to raise your hand in the Zoom platform or press star nine if you're calling in on a phone line. Uh, and the order in which we take testimony is as follows. First, from elected officials. Second, from the Planning Department, uh, or the Massachusetts Historic Commission, who have statutory review responsibility. Then from the property owner. Then from those speaking or submitting written testimony at the hearing in support of designation, including the applicant. Then from those speaking or submitting written testimony at the hearing tonight in opposition to designation. Then from those who wish to comment, not necessarily in support or up, in support of or in opposition to designation. And then from anyone with questions or rebuttals on the testimony. So again, uh, when I call your category, please raise your hand in the Zoom, uh, raise your hand function or press star nine on the phone. I think that will then allow you to unmute yourself. Please state your name and address and your relationship to the property. Public comment will be limited to five minutes for the petitioner spokesperson and for the owner, and two minutes per person for others. Comments should be focused on the validity of the study report and the criteria for designation. Uh, we do not consider comments about ownership use or future development plans. So I'll jump in, and first we would like to hear from any elected officials who would like to comment.
All right. I see, uh, Nat Sheedley, you have your hand raised. I will unmute you.
That's for owner. He's not his owner.
Okay, so not yet. Oh, there are some elected officials here. Are they here to comment on this matter or move on?
Give them a moment.
All right. Anyone from the Boston Planning Department or the Massachusetts Historical Commission? All right, now we'll hear from the property owner or the owner's representative. Need that hand raised again.
Right. Uh, Nat Sheedley, you should, uh, be able to unmute yourself, and you'll have five minutes.
Great. Well, uh, thank you, everybody. Um, I, uh, I really appreciate the opportunity to comment on, uh, the proposal to designate Old South Meeting House. I speak, um, as the, uh, President and CEO of Revolutionary Spaces, which is the nonprofit organization that, um, owns and cares, cares for and, uh, does the preservation work on Old South Meeting House. We also, uh, care for the Old State House, uh, which is designated as Boston Landmark. So we have lots of experience working very productively with, um, the staff of the Landmarks Commission and with the Commissioners. I hope it is a uncontroversial proposition that this site is of great historical significance for all of the reasons that are stated in the study report and, uh, that it is a significant landmark for the city of Boston. Um, I'm grateful to the Landmarks Commission for having undertaken this study report. Um, it feels like it's, uh, long overdue to designate Old South Meeting House. Um, I do want to say how grateful I am to the staff for their hard work on the study report and for the very, um, clear and consistent communication they've had with, uh, with me and with members of our staff, uh, and with members of our board, one of whom is, uh, here, uh, with us this evening at this meeting. So, um, thanks so much to the great professionalism of the staff, uh, as they've moved this study report forward. We really look forward to, um, working together to ensure that the building receives the best care, uh, to the highest possible standards, um, that, uh, that we can give it. The, I do want to say, uh, just for the record that, uh, I have reviewed the standards and criteria. I fully support them. Uh, I understand them, and, uh, we, as an organization, uh, support the designation of the Meeting House. So I hope that you will accept the study report and that you will vote in favor of designating this building as a Boston Landmark. Thank you.
Thank you, Nat. Um, we will move on now to the next category, which is anyone speaking or submitting written testimony this evening, otherwise in support of designation.
Okay, I see someone named Kaliga. Um, if you could give us her full name. Can you unmute yourself?
Well, uh, could I put on my video? You have.
No, no, sorry, you can't. But you'll have two minutes to make your comments.
Why am I not allowed to? Okay, whatever.
Thank you.
Actually, I legally can use one name if I want, because I went to court to do it, because I'm in the arts world also. Uh, but my long Spanish version is Carla Lisa Kaliga. Please never call me Carla Lisa. Anyway, everyone calls me Kaliga. But I'm here for 19 Kenton, but when I hear this matter, I need to make a comment. I am actually shocked that in 2025, this iconic historic building is just now coming up to be landmarked. And it makes me wonder how many other iconic historic buildings are not landmarked in Boston that are part of our history and the history of the founding of freedom that started here with the revolution starting in Boston. I don't know. I wish maybe the BLC would give us a list because they need to be. I'm very happy that the parcels on, on the east end, was it the north? Are, uh, there to, to preserve that because it seems like the present regime in the city is trying to build a lot of glass and steel towers. And every one of these iconic historic buildings should be landmarked. I mean, it's 2025. Are you kidding me? This is just now being landmarked? Is there a place where we can get a list of some of the historic buildings who are not yet landmarked? Do you have such a thing at BLC?
So we actually have a map on our website that will show you visually where all the landmarks are and where they, where there aren't. Uh, but all the landmarks are initiated by the public. And so if there's something you think should be landmarked that isn't, like, please organize a petition. We would love to have it. So it's all coming from people. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else, uh, speaking in favor of designations this evening? All right, I'll move on to, uh, anyone speaking in opposition to designation. And we'll move on to anyone who's not sure if they're in support or opposition but wants to say something. And finally, anyone with a follow-up question on something that's already been brought up earlier this evening? All right. At this time, I would now invite Commissioners to ask questions or comment on the study report or the proposed designation. Uh, encourage Commissioners to make their comments publicly. Uh, it's part of the public record, and I think that deliberation is important. Joe, you'll call on people.
Sure. Commissioner Haney?
Hi, hi. Uh, the, the building is already on the National Registry. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Is, is that a higher standard than the Boston Landmark?
It's actually, in many ways, a lower level of protection because e-essentially, there are some protections that kick in if federal funding is involved in a project. But, um, landmark designation, local landmark designation was what establishes standards and criteria that can really guide the care of the building in any circumstances, no matter what funding is involved. So, um, it will provide more protection than it currently has.
Yeah. Do, do we know how long it's been on the National Registry?
I could probably tell you in a minute. I'll pull up the study report, unless, Matt, if you happen to know, feel free to jump in. It would, okay, here we go. It was designated a National Historic Landmark in 1960. It is also part of the Boston National Historical Park, which was established on 1974, which is a collection of sites, um, to deal with the Revolutionary War.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Ganyo?
Yeah, just following up on both Kaliga and Commissioner Haney's comment, it would be really interesting to see a list of national historic landmarks that aren't Boston landmarks. Because it seems like that would be a really great place to focus on, or at least publicize that fact that these, these buildings have achieved the highest level of significance you can in the country, yet they still aren't a Boston landmark. So, um, just as a side comment to, um, the previous comments. And I just want to say that this is a fascinating study report, and I appreciated how some of the information was presented in it in table form and list form about the number of changes that it's seen and just listing fabric from various eras, because otherwise it's impossible to follow. So I just think that in a case like this, where a building has seen so many changes, um, some of which were meant to take it back to an earlier appearance, that it's just, it's critical to, um, to just sort of list that out. We, we saw sort of similar case with the old corner bookstore buildings, where there's been many changes to those structures over the time, some of which were intended to bring it back to a past appearance successfully or not is open to debate. But those attempts, um, having been recognized and listed out, I think is just very, um, very important. So, um, thank you for the way that that was organized and presented. It helped a lot.
Great. Thanks, Jeffrey. Liz, did you have something to add before we move on to?
Yes, just to point out that National Register listing, as Jennifer said, is, um, quite an honorary listing. Uh, we do have national historic landmarks, uh, throughout the country. Also, an honorary listing that provides no protections. We also have Massachusetts Historic Landmarks, and there is, um, there is a level of protection with those buildings that have received that designation.
Thank you, Liz.
Also somewhere on our website, I think, uh, or at least on another publicly accessible document, is a list of, of pending landmarks that haven't yet gotten all the way through the process, including a number of the buildings that people might think or assume are already landmarks.
We have, um, both a spreadsheet format, and then we have a map view. So whatever people find most useful, they can refer to. But a lot of the time, people assume that some of these buildings are already designated as landmarks. And they don't realize no one's ever submitted a petition to do it. So.
Thanks, Jen. Commissioner Hart, would you like to make your comments?
One thing that I wanted to go check, and I didn't get time, didn't go through the report in very detail. I wanted to make sure that there is a reference to the existing MBTA stairways and elevator adjacent to the Meeting House in the report.
Uh, I can, I can, uh, speak to that, Chris, Commissioner. Um, we have, uh, reached out and have spoken to the MBTA. Um, they do have, um, some easements on the parcel to the north. Um, they, I believe, have some future accessibility projects planned. They are working with Revolutionary Spaces, and they are aware of, um, the designation that we're putting forth.
The, the, I was in the closet. I just wanted to make sure that the report clearly states that there are easements and that there are MBTA staircases directly above the building.
Um, yes.
The, uh, written explicitly in the report.
It is mentioned that there's, um, an MBTA headhouse and a station on that adjacent parcel. And then in the standards and criteria, it also kind of addresses the way that parcel is to be treated. Um, so there is some discussion of it, yes.
Okay, I, I, both test. Again, I, I, I was concerned that we might want, we might want a little more language in here, so.
Thanks, Chris.
That's, uh, I don't know. This is one that we should got to before I was born.
Great. Thanks, Chris. Commissioner Orlando, you had your hand raised, but you put it down. Did you want to make a comment?
Um, my comment was already made, so. Okay. But I will just second, um, Commissioner Ganyo on, on how the formatting was done here and, um, really makes a difference with how much information there is there to digest.
Thanks, Justine.
All right. Other Commissioners, before we close this portion of the meeting? Um, hearing none, I'm going to conclude, uh, tonight's public testimony and ask Jennifer to please review with us, uh, our next steps.
As required by the BLC's regulations, written statements may be submitted for the record up until three working days following the hearing to the BLC at 20 City Hall Avenue, Boston, Massachusetts, 02108. Statements may also be sent to blc@boston.gov. An extension of time for submitting written testimony and a postponement of the designation vote may be granted tonight at the Chair's discretion. The public record of the hearing will be available upon advanced requests to BLC staff at blc@boston.gov. Thank you.
Thanks, Jen. I'm going to say that, given, uh, the testimony that we received this evening about the study report, that I think the Commission has. that I think the commission has the information needed to proceed to a vote. Um, and even though the commission will vote on the designation tonight, staff, as you said, will continue to accept written testimony for the record uh until this Friday, June thirteenth, twenty twenty five, at five P M. Um, so we're going to move along to first vote uh to accept the study report with the addendum uh that Jen mentioned earlier, that includes the twenty twenty one report on members of color at the Old South Church and members who enslaved people of color for this proposed Boston landmark. Um, I'll start by saying uh voting will be alternate commissioners Amadeo, Hart, Ward Hyatt, and Haney, and I need a motion and a second to accept the study report.
I'll make that motion, Brad, Justine.
Thank you. Sorry, I didn't catch you seconded. Chris Hart, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Jacques?
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Orlando? Commissioner Baraducci?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Amadeo?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yeah.
Commissioner Ward Hyatt?
Yes.
Commissioner Haney?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so the study report is accepted. Um, and we will move on now. Uh, I will entertain a motion and a second uh to accept the designation of Old South Meeting House as a Boston Landmarks Commission. Uh, and voting would be alternate commissioners Gagnon, Hart, Ward Hyatt, and Haney, and I'll start with Commissioner Jacques. Oh, no, sorry, I will start with a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
And I'll second.
Thank you, uh, Jeffrey Gagnon and Felicia. And I'll start the voting with Commissioner Jacques.
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Orlando?
Yes.
Commissioner Baraducci?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Gagnon?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward Hyatt?
Yes.
Commissioner Haney?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Uh, so the designation passes. Uh, the commissioner, excuse me, the commission having voted to designate the landmark this evening means that staff will create a vote of designation document that will present the details about the property, a list of commissioners' votes on the designation, and the date of the vote by the Boston Landmarks Commission. This document will be sent to the city clerk who advances it through the approximately forty-five day mayoral and city council approval process. The mayor shall transmit her approval or disapproval to the city council within fifteen days. The city council then has thirty days in which to overturn by a two-thirds vote a designation thus approved by the mayor. Once the designation is returned to the Boston Landmarks Commission by the city clerk, it is ready for the final step, which is reporting uh with the Registry of Deeds. So thank you, everybody, uh, and congratulations to uh Revolutionary Spaces and the Old South Meeting House.
Brad, before we move on, um Kirsten Hoffman has joined us.
Hi, Kirsten. You're messing up my voting tally, but oh. I'll regroup. All right, um, we're going to move on to the next item, which is nineteen Kenton Road. Um, tonight, we will be considering the designation of nineteen Kenton Road in Jamaica Plain as a Boston Landmarks Commission. Boston Landmarks Commission is required to hold a public hearing on all proposed designations following the completion of a study report, which describes the significance of the property and the standards and criteria by which future changes can be evaluated. The study report is made available for public review and comment for at least three weeks prior to the hearing. Purpose of the hearing is to review the findings of the study report and vote to accept the study report. I'll say at the outset that based on the amount of public comment received and anticipated tonight, under my authority of chair, I've decided to schedule the vote to designate at a later date. So I would now ask uh again, architectural historian Jennifer Gogler to make a presentation summarizing the findings of the study report for this property.
Thanks, Brad. On November twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, the Boston Landmarks Commission accepted a petition to study the designation of nineteen Kenton Road in Jamaica Plain as a landmark under chapter seven seventy-two of the Acts of nineteen seventy-five as amended. On May twentieth, twenty twenty-five, the Boston Landmarks Commission posted a study report on the proposed landmark. I will now read a summary from that study report. Nineteen Kenton Road was built on land belonging to prominent Boston businessman and real estate developer Isaac Harris Carey. Carey began as a dealer in horn and ivory before establishing a dry goods business with branches in Boston and New York. Uh, locally, Carey Carey was particularly influential in developing the Stony Brook area of Jamaica Plain. By the nineteen eighteen thirties, excuse me, he had amassed much of the land between Washington Street and Forest Hill Street. It appears um based on research that Carey built nineteen Kenton Road as an income-producing rental property, and Isaac Harris Carey's main house still exists today at two hundred and thirty-five Forest Hill Street. Um, so if you look on the slide, the red arrow is pointing to the subject property tonight, nineteen Kenton Road. Um, and down here, you can see uh Carey's main house on his estate. Uh, the house at nineteen Kenton Road was constructed on the cusp of a major period of transition for Jamaica Plain, ushered in by the arrival of the omnibus, horse-drawn streetcars, and the expansion of the railroad. So the house is significant as a surviving example of a detached two-family dwelling built for investment purposes from the early period of Jamaica Plain's transformation from farming and resort community to streetcar suburb. It is one of the earliest houses in the area. And it is also architecturally significant as an early example of the Italianate style in Boston, having been constructed sometime between eighteen forty-three and eighteen fifty-six. It has Italianate detailing featured on a front gabled form that was popularized by the earlier Greek Revival style. And this front gable subtype of um Italianate architecture comprises only about ten percent of surviving examples. Um, to place the house in context, Kenton Road is a short tree-lined street ending in a cul-de-sac that features a mix of mid to late nineteenth century architectural styles, including Italianate, Greek Revival, Second Empire, and Colonial Revival. The house at nineteen Kenton Road is a historic anchor of this architecturally distinctive enclave, which has seen little change or intrusion over the years. Uh, Boston Landmarks Commission staff feels that this enclave is eligible for future designation as a historic district under chapter seven seventy-two, and that the loss of nineteen Kenton Road would detract from the cohesiveness of this historic neighborhood. Um, so to conclude, nineteen Kenton Road has um both architectural merit and historic associations, and further is a distinctive part of a collection of houses that is significant to Jamaica Plain and the city of Boston due to their architectural styles and the largely intact historic streetscape. Boston Landmarks Commission staff recommends designation of the house to protect against demolition because its loss would be a major disruption to this unique neighborhood. Um, I'd like to point out here the um view from Macris at the top right of the slide where you can see how many houses are inventoried on Kenton Road, um indicating that it really is a special uh streetscape within this neighborhood. And I just want to also add that the intent of designation is not to oppose any infill on the site or increased density in the neighborhood, but to ensure that any new construction on this parcel does not damage the historic building or detract from the existing rhythm and scale of the neighborhood. Um, and I think that is, yeah, that's it for me. Thank you.
All right, thanks very much. Uh, Jennifer, can you tell us uh anything about public comment, please, written comment prior to the hearing?
Yes, um, Brad, as you mentioned earlier, we have received um substantial amount of public feedback on this proposed designation, which has been shared with the commissioners in advance of the hearing. Um, I'll summarize it briefly here. We've received three letters in support of designation from neighborhood organizations, which are the Stony Brook Neighborhood Association, the Loring Greeno House, and the Sumner Hill Association. We've received three letters in support of designation from elected officials. Uh, one from city councillor Brian Worrell, one from city councillor Enrique Pepin, and one from city councillor Benjamin Weber, and state representative Samantha Montagna. Um, twenty-seven, we have received twenty-seven letters in support of designation from the public. Um, that includes one from the former BLC Chair Susan Pranger. We have received nine letters and comments um in opposition to designation, uh, many of which cite the need for additional housing in the neighborhood and in Boston in general. Um, we also received two letters from the property owner in opposition to designation, and those were also provided to the commission. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, gonna sort of echo what we just did on the last one, but I'll read this in again. Uh, we move on to verbal testimony. Um, uh, and we take testimony in a particular order. Uh, I'll read the categories first, and then when we get to your category, please use the raise your hand function in Zoom or press star nine if you're calling on a phone line. Uh, uh, and uh someone on staff will unmute you, uh, so you can give your testimony. Please don't raise your hand before your category is called. So to recap, the categories are first from elected officials, second from the planning, Boston Planning Department, and the Massachusetts Historical Commission, who have statutory review responsibility, uh, from the property owner or their representative, um, from those speaking or submitting written testimony in support of designation, and I would include in that the applicant. Um, from those speaking or submitting uh written testimony tonight in opposition to designation, then from those who wish to comment, not necessarily in support or in opposition to designation, and then uh last from anyone with questions or rebuttals of the testimony. If you wish to speak again when I call your hand, please re- reuse the raise your hand function when I call your category, I'm sorry, or press star nine if you're on the phone. Uh, when you are unmuted or able to unmute yourself, please state your name and address and your relationship to the property. Uh, public comment tonight will be limited to five minutes for the petitioner spokesperson and five minutes for the owner or their representative, uh, and two minutes for anyone else. Comments should be focused on the validity and accuracy of the study report and the criteria for designation. Uh, and we do not take comments about ownership, use, or future development plans, which are not our purview. So I'm going to go back into that list and um ask first uh for any comments from elected officials again, uh, raise your hand and Joe will unmute you, allow you to unmute yourself and call on you.
Great, we'll start with uh Samantha Montano. You should be able to unmute yourself.
Thank you. Um, hi, everyone. Again, I am the state representative for this district. Uh, myself and councillor Weber wrote a joint letter um voicing our support for this project. Um, it it has a lot of community support. I I think that most, if I'm perusing and I know my community, I think most of the folks on this call are in support. So if we could maybe have a vote today, that would be great, but I understand your procedure and and how you'd like to move things. Um, but that's all. I'm in support. And if we can move quickly on the project, that would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Great, thank you for your comment. Bonnie Delawine, you should be able to unmute yourself. You'll have uh your two minutes.
Great. Thanks. Um, thank you to the commissioners for the opportunity to speak. Uh, I'm here on behalf of city councillor Ben Weber, who represents District Six. Yes, that is Mama speaking. Sorry, I have a toddler with me. Um, and uh, as I'm sure you'll hear from many folks tonight, the house at nineteen Kenton blends various architectural styles and is a great example of Boston's history of middle and working-class housing. Um, the existence residence is cited on a double-lot parcel, and so instead of demolition and construction of one larger building, the Stony Brook Neighborhood Association has suggested preserving the existing historical building. Um, and uh, we are in support of that and constructing, um, there's still uh potential to construct a separate residential structure on the double lot, which would allow the same number of market rate units. So we've sent this letter in support with Representative Sam Montano, and appreciate our other council colleagues who have sent in letters of support as well, including councillors Santana, Pepin, and Worrell. Uh, thanks for your time.
Great, thank you, Bonnie. Anna Calderon, you'll have uh two minutes to make your comments. You should be able to unmute yourself.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'm large, thank you, Santana. And councillor Santana would just like to echo the comments of the district councillor and the rep of the area in support of this um proposal. Um, I also got permission from councillor Pepin's and Worrell's office to also echo these comments and would like to also go on record in support as they said on the letter. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna. Right, I think that's all the hands I see raised.
All right, uh, our next category uh is anyone from the Boston Planning Department or the Massachusetts Historical Commission. We'll move on to uh the property owner or their representative.
All right, I see. Richard Lynn, you'll have five minutes to make your comment. You should be able to unmute yourself. You should be able to unmute yourself now, or I'll try once more. Liz, perhaps, do you want to make him a co-host? I'm trying to unmute him, and it's not, doesn't seem to work.
Mr. Lynn, you've been made a co-host. You should be able to unmute yourself.
Thank you. Are you able to hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, yep.
Great, thank you. I apologize.
You'll have five minutes, you'll have five minutes now to make your comment.
Thank you, sir. Um, and thank you, and good evening Chairman Walker and members of the commission. For the record, my name is Richard Lynn. I'm an attorney with the business address of two forty-five Sumner Street in East Boston. I represent the property owners Mark and Paul Federico, uh, who object to any designation of nineteen Kenton Road as a landmark. It's their position. This commission lacks the statutory authority to have accepted the petition in the first place and ultimately make any such designation that is being contemplated and as uh discussed as part of the study report. Um, Mr. Chairman, you should have my written objection that has been submitted as part of the record. I do uh want to make a few points on behalf of my client, however, this evening. Uh, first, in the interest of completeness, I think it's important to note for the record that while the commission accepted this petition on November twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, uh, it revoted to accept the petition on May thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, after modifying its policy as it relates to acceptance of petitions to designate. Furthermore, I want to point out, because I did hear um in the presentation of the study report, the fact that this may contribute to a future historic district that has not even been designated. Uh, that is immaterial to the commission's review of this petition, and while I do see that reference in the study report, I do want to point out uh, that has no bearing on whether or not uh this qualifies under the Enabling Act. Um, a couple of other points I think that are important. Uh, first, I'm sure this commission is well aware. Uh, the commission is a creature of statute, namely chapter seven seventy-two of the Acts of nineteen seventy-five. From where all powers of this commission are derived, section four of your Enabling Act sets forth the framework in which you as commissioners can lawfully designate a property as a landmark. Within the definitions contained in section two of your Enabling Act, the terms landmark and landmark district are specifically and clearly defined. In each instance, there's a specific reference in those definitions to section four where the terms landmark and landmark district appear approximately sixty times. Since its enactment in nineteen seventy-five, in order to meet the definition of a landmark or landmark district, there must be historical, social, cultural, architectural, or aesthetic significance to the city and the Commonwealth, the New England region, or the nation. It's without question that the presence of the word "and" after the word "city" in those definitions limits your power to designate a landmark that does not reach the level of significance set forth in those definitions found in section two. As this commission may be aware, the Enabling Act has been amended only three times since nineteen seventy-five, and no time has the definition of what constitutes a landmark or landmark district been changed despite recent efforts by the Boston City Council to do so in twenty twenty-one. Your vote in March of this year to amend your own policy for accepting and designating properties that maintain merely local significance like nineteen Kenton Road is a dramatic shift in the interpretation of the definitions contained in section two of your Enabling Act, and one of the leg- one the legislature refused to adopt per the twenty twenty-one Home Rule petition submitted by the Boston City Council. As a result, your change in policy that was voted on on March eleventh of twenty twenty-five would be clearly in excess of your statutory authority and would not allow you to designate nineteen Kenton Road as a landmark absent uh legislative action to amend your Enabling Act first. For these reasons and the reasons set forth in our written objections and the cases cited, I respectfully request the commission reject this petition, take no further action on designation of the property as a landmark, and dismiss the petition entirely. Thank you very much for your time, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission.
Thank you, Richard.
Sorry, just a question, Brad. I have, I can respond to some of that, but should I wait for the rebuttal portion of the script?
I think so, yeah.
Okay, I will do that. Thank you, thank you.
So having heard from the property owner or their representative, let's move on to those speaking or submitting testimony this evening in support of designation. And if there is a representative of the petitioner, I would, I would start with them if they'd like to speak.
All right, I believe Jennifer, that would be you. So I'm going to ask you to unmute. And you should, you'll have five minutes.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Urhean. I live at forty-seven Rossmore Road in Jamaica Plain, which is just a couple blocks over from Kenton Road. And I actually didn't realize I was going to get a full five minutes, so I thank you for that. I might not use it. So I am the one who submitted the petition for this house, so obviously I'm speaking in favor of landmarking it. And for the record, I've also submitted a petition for an architectural conservation district for the Kenton area. And that is still pending acceptance, but I just wanted to put that out there. I also want to thank the support of our city councillors and state rep who have listened to their many constituents who support this designation, our District Six Councillor Weber, Santana, Peppen, Worrell, and State Rep Montano. I also want to thank the Landmarks Commission, who funded this study report, which they did not have to do. But I think that the fact that the the BLC funded the report shows how important they feel this property is to landmarks. So I think that's an important point to make. I also want to thank the historian who wrote the study report, which expanded on the significant research that we had already done that was included in, in the petition. So we're very, it's very gratifying to see what we sketched out be filled in further, and I think strengthens the argument that we made in our petition. So I, I respectfully request that the commissioners designate this house as a landmark because of its part in the early history of the development of Jamaica Plain and because it is an intact and early example of a particular style of Italianate and one of the earliest houses in the area. And I also would like to say that due to the overwhelming support you will hear tonight seeing the names listed on the participant list. And also due to the many support letters you've already received, I respectfully request that you do vote tonight and not delay this any further. That will help the owner and developer move on and work, work on the house and do something that's more palatable for, for neighbors and be able to create more housing, which was what their purpose was to begin with. And I just want to say also that neighbors fully support this being turned into livable housing again, as well as additional units in the empty lot next door, if, as long as they're in keeping with, with the rest of the street. So we're, we're supporting six units, just not in the format that he has originally proposed. And so we hope that there's a way to move this along so that they can get started on, on the work they would need to do to, to restore the house. So thank you very much, and I'll let others speak.
Joe, I'm going to jump in before you call on the next people, person to remind that many people that have their hands up that we're going category by category. So if you're speaking in support of designation, you should have your hand up. If you're, if you'd like to speak in opposition, do not put your hand up at this time. That's the next category. And I would remind anyone who wishes to speak that the comments should be limited to the validity of the study report and any criteria for possible designation, but we do not want to discuss any proposed use of the property.
Thank you, Brad. We'll start with Frederick Betterline. You'll have your two minutes.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Very good. I want to thank you. I think the, again, Jennifer pointed out that you've done this historical study and it emphasizes many of the points we've made, plus it, it adds a little more history to the story. I'm Frederick Betterline. I live, I've lived within two blocks of this house for thirty years and always admired it. I am a builder. I remodel and, and I built, and I always build to the historical style or remodel. I try to bring back the original style. I'm also a member of Historical New England, the trustees of reservations, I visit every home. And I recognize this house as what I would call is a carpenter Gothic. Because it was a period of time when these great brackets could be made and in a larger scale and carpenters or good carpenters could design a house and embellish it in a way that reflected the period. I, 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 I respect the, the, the name of Italianate because it has wonderful rafter supports that are, that give a real Italianate flavor as well. And I just want to say that the developer tried to do a gabled house. It was two gabled structures. But when you take down a house of this quality, you lose the proportion, you lose the brackets that can't be made again. And I'd like to emphasize that if he were to save this section of the house and he needn't save the addition behind it, it's a kitchen addition and doesn't, doesn't show the quality of ornament. If he were to save this house and
I'm gonna, I'm gonna remind you, please, that we're not going to discuss any prospective use of the property.
That's just, that's just, I'm just just emphasized what the neighborhood has said is that we'd like to see it saved and we would like him to be able to build around it. So, but I would say not to
Thank you, thank you, Frederick. We're at your, you're at your two minutes. Thank you. Okay, we will move next to Michael Babcock. You should be able to unmute yourself.
Thank you, Michael Babcock, eighteen Kenton Road. My wife and I live directly across the street from nineteen Kenton. We knew the previous owners. They were friends of ours. We fully support landmarking this house. And in addition, the designation of Kenton Road as a architectural conservation district. We love living here. We just love this house and support its landmarking. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. We'll move to Jen Wampler. Jan Wampler, you should be able to unmute yourself and you'll have two minutes to make your comments.
Yes, my name is Jan Wampler. I live at thirty-nine Kenton Road, which is about three properties from nineteen Kenton Road. I've lived here for fifty-five years, but I'm a newcomer. There are many people here that have been here much longer than me. Kenton Road is a special street and this building is a special building on the street. And one of the reasons why I moved here when I did. It's an outstanding example of the period. And there are many period, different historic periods on the street. And Kenton Road is a, a unique street in Jamaica Plain. I support the commission and hope that it will be saved. It should be saved and can be built, can be rehabbed and another building can be built next to it that can house what is needed. I thank you.
Great. Thank you, Jen. We'll move to Al Curtis Clark. You'll have two minutes to make your comments. You should be able to unmute yourself. Yep, you should be able to unmute yourself. Al Curtis Clark?
Yes. One moment. I believe I'm unmuted now.
Yes, we can hear you fine. You have two minutes.
Thank you very much. My name is Al Curtis Clark and I reside at thirty-six Gartland Street in Jamaica Plain, which is one block southeast parallel to nineteen Kenton Road. And I've been here for nearly forty years. I fully support the acceptance of the study report and eventual landmarking, a landmark designation for this house. My hope is that this commission will accept the well-written and inclusive study report and ultimately bestow a landmark designation to nineteen Kenton Road. I thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment. We'll move now to Joy Silverstein. You should be able to unmute yourself and you'll have two minutes.
Hi, my name is Joy Silverstein. I live at sixty-four Kenton. I've been here for forty years. This is a small, quiet neighborhood and we just are looking for housing, the, as many units as the developer has already suggested, which is six, but to make it in two separate buildings by building on the empty lot and by renovating this house, not tearing it down. This house matches what's on the street now. If you walked around here, you would notice what a nice neighborhood we are. And we would like to keep it that way. I hope you will vote tonight because you have, we have a lot of support. I think you've gotten a lot of letters from many people and I want to thank everybody for listening. That's all.
Great. Thank you, Joy. We'll move to Jenny Nathans. Jenny, you should be able to unmute yourself and you'll have two minutes to make your comment.
Thank you. My name is Jenny Nathans. I live at thirteen Mehan Street, which is just a couple blocks from this house. I've lived in the area for over twenty years. I strongly support the study report and landmarking of nineteen Kenton Road. In addition to the information presented in the study report about the architectural and historical significance of the property, the house's owner and tenant record represents the working and middle-class members of the community who began moving into the community during the time this house was built. And they're individuals not typically represented, represented in Boston's landmark properties, but they're no less important to the history of the city than the Boston Brahmins. I respectfully request that you vote to accept the study report and to accept this as a landmarked property. And again, as we've been hearing, since there's such overwhelming support from the community that you've received through letters and you're hearing tonight, it would be wonderful if you were able to vote on landmarking tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jenny. Carolyn, if you could give us your first and last name, you will have two minutes to make your comment.
Hi, my name is Carol in Kelly. I live at forty-four Kenton Road, just up the street from nineteen. I'm just going to echo others' comments here. I support the landmarking based in large part on my having read the study report, I think there's a lot in it that lends itself to the landmarking of this property. I also have lived on this street for, I was raised on this street actually, and and so I am aware of the, the architecture and the the, 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 the street, the, excuse me. The I'm sorry, excuse me. Yes, anyway, I, I just, I'll just stop there and just say that I support this landmarking and if you were able respectfully to vote tonight on whether to landmark this structure, I would appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, Carolyn. We will move next to Kaliga. You should be able to unmute yourself and you'll have two minutes to make your comment.
Thank you very much. So I am, the Stony Brook Neighborhood Association, I'm on the steering committee, does support this developer doing what they want to do. What I don't understand is if you can have six market rate condos and not get rid of beauty, why would you get rid of beauty? I don't understand that. This is a beautiful house. This is a historic house. And obviously, there's a lot of people that care very much that this house is not altered on the outside. On the inside, do what you want. But on the outside, all of the comments prior to me are true. It fits in the street. It has this historic significance. The, both because of the style and the people that live there and what went on on the whole street. So I also do not appreciate having the BLC maligned by anybody because I've been to enough meetings to know that you do, I don't always agree with you, but you do a lot of good work. And that kind of bothered me. But yes, I am totally in support of landmarking nineteen Kenton Road so that we can keep this beautiful home for a lot longer. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. We'll move to Jonathan McCurdy. Jonathan, you should be able to unmute yourself and you will have two minutes to make your comment. Jonathan, can you unmute yourself?
Not able to.
All right, maybe Jonathan will move to Rachel O'Connor and we'll come back to you. Rachel, you'll have two minutes to make your comment.
Hi, yes. My name's Rachel O'Connor and my husband and I live with our family at fourteen Gartland, which directly abuts the property at nineteen Kenton. I just want to echo the sentiment and the message of my neighbors who have lived in this neighborhood far longer than we have. My husband and I were really intentional when we were looking at a place to have our family's first home, that it be in the Stony Brook neighborhood. We fell in love with this neighborhood in large part because of many of the things that the points that my neighbors have spoken to. It's just a lovely neighborhood. It has a wonderful historic feel. And that's something that when I tell people where we live in Jamaica Plain, I have heard that from other people. I was on the phone with someone at, I think, the Boston Public Health Commission a few weeks ago, and I mentioned that I lived on this street. And she said, I love walking down Kenton Road. I love those big, beautiful houses. It really just is a special neighborhood and preserving the feel of the neighborhood is something that I know is important to my family and important to people who have lived here far longer than we have. So I am in full support of accepting the study report and designating nineteen Kenton as a landmark.
Great. Thank you for your comment. We'll move now to Eric Shog. Eric, you will have two minutes to make your comment, to be able to unmute yourself.
Hello?
Yes, hello, Eric. We can hear you. You have two minutes to make your comment.
Sure. Hi, my name is Eric Shoag. I live at it's the same address as Rachel at fourteen Gartland, which is directly behind the building in question. I just want to add my voice to all the others in support of making it a landmark, if not the entire street, and preserving the preserving the, the mood and the feel and the look of the, the neighborhood, especially in the face of the, the changing that's going on as we see all around us. But yes, very much in favor of this and thanks for letting me speak.
Thank you. We'll move now to Karen. Karen, if you could give us your first and last name, you should be able to unmute yourself. You'll have two minutes to make your comment.
My name is Karen Guida. I live at, I live on Sherland Street, which is a very small street between Kenton Road and Gartland Street. I support this study report for nineteen Kenton Road and its landmark designation. We need to preserve what mainly, what remaining history we have. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for your comment, Karen. And finally, Jonathan, hopefully we can get you to unmute. Jonathan, can you unmute? There you go.
Yes, can you hear me okay?
We can. You'll have two minutes to
Thank you. Thank you for bearing with me. I'm on my phone because I was going to jump on my spouse's computer. However, my computer, my computer doesn't have the mic and all that. But let me proceed. Jonathan McCurdy, I live at forty-seven Rossmore Road, so in the Stony Brook neighborhood, just two blocks from nineteen Kenton Road. And I would ask for, for you to vote due to the overwhelming support to hold a vote tonight and to vote to support the landmarking of nineteen Kenton Road. One of the things that I love about Boston is the historic architecture that is still preserved in many areas of the city. And that's what makes a city special. When you have both the new building, the new construction that can add capacity for housing that, that people, that people desire and need. And have that, have that hand in hand with the historic architecture. and have that, have that hand in hand with the historic architecture that shows the building in the city throughout, throughout the time. And so this is also significant in that this isn't the biggest fanciest house in the neighborhood. This is working class housing that was constructed. It's an, it's a part of the story of Boston and it's part of the story of working class people in Boston, people that go unnamed oftentimes. And, and this is part of that story. So again, I would, I really, uh, ask you to, uh, to look closely at the, at the study report and to, and to support the landmarking of this building. And I would also say that, uh, regarding the, uh, development of the neighborhood, uh, that the developer would still have the opportunities to build an equal number of housing units, even if this building is preserved.
Jonathan, thank you. We're at your two minutes.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. We'll move to Patty Yeele. Patty, you should be able to unmute yourself and you'll have two minutes.
Hi, yes, thank you. My name is Patty Ailey. I live at eleven Mehan Street, uh, right around the corner. Um, I wanted to say that I'm in support of the landmarking of this building. My history with this building is, is I, that is the very first house that I lived in when I moved to Boston in nineteen eighty-six. Um, at that time, the orange line was still above ground and I lived on the second floor and I could see when the orange line would go by in the, at nighttime and it would spark, it would, our kitchen would be like strobe. It had some, this was really an amazing thing. What I do want to emphasize is that house is perfectly capable of handling three units. There was a couple living on the floor. There were four people living on the second and third floor. There's plenty of room to, to add an additional without tearing the house down. Thank you.
Patty and Brad, with that, I think those are all the hands I see.
Through that list, um, thanks very much, Joe. Um, I'm gonna move on to the next category then, uh, of asking to hear from anyone who would like to speak in opposition to designation or take issue with the study.
Okay. So we'll go back to Richard Lynn's. Richard, be able to unmute yourself.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Cornish. I, I just wanted to clarify. So does the owner get an additional opportunity to comment? I just, I know there's an order for procedure here, so I just want to be clear. Um, my understanding is there's a rebuttal that's upcoming. I'd rather preserve my, uh, additional time for, uh, after hearing the rebuttal. If that's possible.
Yes, you, there is a rebuttal, uh, period coming up, or if the owner wants to speak separately from you, uh, in opposition, uh, that's also possible.
Oh, I'll, I'll reserve my time for rebuttal or for additional rebuttal. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Seeing no other hands raised, we'll move on to those who wish to speak, not necessarily in support or in opposition. And seeing no hands raised there, uh, anyone with questions or rebuttals on the testimony that has been made previous to this moment?
Um, I just want to clarify that I, I will not be giving a rebuttal tonight, so I can proceed. Thank you.
Okay.
All right, I think was that Richard Lynn's is this?
Richard, this is your moment.
Oh, great. Thank you. Uh, thank you again, Mr. Chairman, uh, for the, for the record, uh, Richard Lynn's on behalf of the owners, uh, Paul and Mark Federico. I just would like to add, I, I, we did hear a good deal of conversation about, uh, the significance of a potential architectural conservation district, I believe was the reference. And certainly, uh, although there is a matter pending, uh, that again is irrelevant to what is before the commission. The commission has a, uh, specific uh, petition to designate that was indicated as having local significance only. It's our position that, uh, local significance was not even eligible to be accepted by the commission as a petition. We have stated our objection uh, to the action by the commission on November twenty-sixth, uh, when it was originally accepted and we've, uh, further, uh, supplemented that objection uh, based upon, uh, the interpretation of the Enabling Act and the definitions therein. Uh, I did hear other comments, uh, relative to, uh, funds that were being spent, uh, to do this study report and those are commission funds. Uh, once again, I would point out that, uh, is our position, the commission has absolutely no authority to designate this property, uh, as, uh, as a landmark based upon the fact that it uh, is merely, uh, at the level of local significance only. Uh, I will reiterate that the legislature by not adopting the Home Repetition has spoken, uh, quite clearly that the definition of a landmark and a landmark district, uh, which has been in place for more than fifty years, uh, remains intact as it was when it was originally adopted as part of the Enabling Act. And, uh, the Supreme Judicial Court, Mr. Chairman, has been very clear on statutory interpretation. Words, including three-letter words, the word "and" is very significant in your Enabling Act. That word "and" requires that the significance level not just be the city of Boston, which this petition, uh, specifically, uh, in, intends to designate. Uh, it has to have significance beyond local level. Um, we've made this very clear in our, uh, objection that's submitted to the commission. And we feel that, uh, quite frankly, the fact that there is no vote being taken tonight to designate, uh, although the commission did indicate uh, in its notice of this hearing, that a vote would be taken. Um, certainly allowing us to pursue an appeal if necessary. Um, if the designation, uh, did go forward, uh, was an opportunity for this commission to record in the Registry of Deeds, a notice, uh, which we believe is improper at this point, uh, to prevent any action by the property owner who had the right to proceed with demolition of this building. And we feel that the fact that the commission is not taking a vote this evening, uh, is intentionally delaying this process. Uh, they clearly intended to do so when they put that notice out, uh, on, uh, May twentieth, indicating that they would take a vote to designate this evening. Um, so I just want to make sure those points are also added for the record, Mr. Chairman. Again, I thank you, uh, for giving me that time.
Thank you. Uh, tho- those points are on the record. I appreciate your reminder, uh, which I will actually amplify for commissioners, uh, that we should not be considering, uh, this matter in relationship to a prospective conservation district, which is not part of our consideration this evening. Um, and then I guess also for commissioners, just with regard to uh, your comments about local significance, I want to assure commissioners that that's being handled at the, at the level of, um, uh, staff council, uh, at, for the city. That gets us through our list, uh, of, of uh, public commenters, uh, and so I would now invite commissioners to ask, uh, questions or comment on the study report at this time.
Commissioner Orlando.
I'm sorry, I'm still just a little confused on, um, the, the piece about, uh, local significance. Um, so that really just applies to, um, the legislation around the, the vote itself to landmark, but it really has no bearing on the vote um, on acceptance of the study report. Right? These are like two individual.
Mr. Lynn would disagree with you on that.
Oh, I'm sorry, not trying to
But-
labor at the same point. I'm sorry.
We're not going to, we're not going to litigate that matter in a hearing tonight.
Okay.
Chair Walker.
Yes.
Um, I'd ask that you call on Jennifer Gogler to, um, provide a little bit of clarification about the definition of a landmark.
Absolutely. If that's helpful to commissioners, Jennifer, please.
Yes, happy to. Um, so uh, Mr. Lynn's is correct about the definition of a landmark as it is provided in Chapter seven seventy-two, which is our enabling legislation. Um, and so there is a definition section at the beginning of Chapter seven seventy-two. And, um, it does say that a landmark must have, have significance. Sorry, I had this open two seconds ago and then I closed it because I didn't think I was gonna talk about it. Um, maybe one second. Okay, I have it open. Okay, so in Section two, definitions, it says a landmark has to have significance to the city and the Commonwealth, the New England region or the nation, implying that it has to be above just significance to the city. It has to meet state significance or higher to be a landmark. However, Sec- Section four of Chapter seven seventy-two is the section of the legislation that outlines the designation process. And that section establishes four criteria by which the commission can designate uh, a landmark or a district. And in that language, it does not say "and," it says "or." So it says the city, the Commonwealth, the New England region, or the nation. Um, obviously, this is a discrepancy. Somebody, I guess, made a mistake when they were writing the legislation back in the day. We have discussed this at length with, um, City Legal Council and the interpretation that we are now guided by is that Section four takes precedence, um, over Section two and that we should be following the interpretation of Section four, which uses the word "or" and therefore allows for designation of sites of local significance. I hope that's clear. I will ask Elizabeth or Kathy if they want to clarify anything in addition. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm good on my end.
Yep, and I'll just reiterate that I don't think we're gonna hash this out, uh, this evening. Uh, I'm sure Mr. Lynn's and, and counsel for the city will continue this conversation, but, uh, commissioners should understand that counsel for the city has said that we're okay to proceed with this vote.
That's correct.
Okay.
Um, so let's, let's hear from commissioners, please, not on, not on procedural matters, but on the substance of the study report. Um, and I'd be happy to, to hear your thoughts and deliberation on that. Anybody?
Actually, um, Jen, on your, on the study report, I'm just trying to orientate, um, the photo on page or figure eight. Um, is this still all one property here or is there a, um, a separation that's in that photo?
Yes, um, if I can, I can attempt to drag this into the screen I'm sharing. I don't know.
Yeah.
It worked? Okay. Okay, so, um, this is the figure you're referring to, right, Justine?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so this figure is taken from the side yard and it is from within the bounds of this parcel. So all of the yard that you see here is part of the subject property. Um, if I could go back to, can I go back to the slides? Hold on. Um, so if I zoom, uh, I can't really zoom in, but, um-
I see, I see exactly what you're gonna point to.
There's a large side yard and I was taking that photo standing within that side yard.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other commissioners? Quiet group. Um, all right, if no other commissioners, uh, have anything they'd like to talk about with regards to the study report, I'm gonna say that that concludes tonight's public testimony and ask Jennifer, please, to uh, review with us the next steps in this process.
Yes, um, as required by the BLC's regulations, written statements may be submitted for the record up until three working days following the hearing to the BLC at twenty City Hall Avenue, Boston, Mass. zero-two-one-zero-eight, or blcatboston.gov. An extension of time for submitting written testimony and a postponement of the designation vote may be granted tonight at the chair's discretion. And the public record of this hearing is available upon request to blcatboston.gov. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Jen. And I'm going to again say that based on tonight's, uh, testimony and the record that we've, uh, reviewed to date, I'm going to extend the period for written testimony for an additional two weeks until June twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-five. Uh, after reviewing the additional testimony, the commission will then meet again at a public hearing on July eighth, twenty-twenty-five to vote on the designation of the proposed landmark. This hearing will be properly noticed according to the enabling legislation of the commission. The hearing agenda will be posted at least ten days in advance at boston.gov/landmarks. So we're gonna move on and just take one vote, which is to accept the study report uh, for this proposed Boston landmark. And I would now entertain a motion and a second on that matter.
We've moved that we approved the study report.
John Amadeo, thank you. One second, please.
Jeff Haney seconds.
Jeff Haney second. Uh, and voting would be alternate commissioners Hoffman, Gonyo, Ward Hyatt and Haney. And I'll start with Commissioner Jacques.
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Orlando.
Yes.
Commissioner Baraducci.
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Yes.
Commissioner Gonyo.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward Hyatt.
Yes.
Commissioner Haney.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Uh, the study report is accepted and that concludes, uh, this portion of the meeting on nineteen Kenton Road for this evening. Thank you all. Um, we're gonna move on to staff updates and commissioner concerns and I'll, I'll recognize Elizabeth Sherva, who's the Dec- Deputy Director of the Office of Historic Preservation and the Chair of, uh, Chair? No, Executive Director of the Boston Landmarks Commission. Uh, to tell us, uh, what's going on on the staff level.
Yes. Uh, the Ba- the next Boston Landmarks Commission hearing will be Tuesday, uh, June twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five. The design review hearing will start at four P M. and the business hearing will begin at six P M. Uh, a reminder that all commissioners are welcome to attend the design review hearing. Uh, please join that design review hearing if you are interested in any of the items listed on the design review agenda. Jen, if you can click the next slide. Uh, the presentations made during the business hearing will be brief and as of now, the proposed agenda will include City Hall and, uh, what you've, what you previously saw in advisory. Um, the non-factory parcel eight, the site at parcel eight and sixteen How Street. Which is the-
Remind us what parcel eight is?
Sure, parcel eight is, um, the parcel next to the non-factory at the corner of Washington and Melnea Cass. Um, and sixteen How Street is, uh, we saw it previously under advisory, uh, for the new addition to the rear. Uh, staff are also working with the owners of Stan Hope Stables to execute a memorandum of agreement that will guide the Boston Landmarks Commission's review of the historic building during their planned construction, uh, of the proposed new building. And a vote to designate Stan Hope Stables as a landmark will occur after the construction is completed. Uh, tonight I am asking for volunteers to serve on a subcommittee to review the rehabilitation of the historic building under the terms of the memorandum of agreement that we are still in the process of working out. I believe the time commitment will probably be once a month, um, until, you know, their, uh, construction is underway. And with that, I would, um, entertain any volunteers who would like to volunteer for that.
You're looking to volunteer.
Will the meetings be mostly in person or?
Um, that hasn't been decided upon, but I think most would be virtual unless, um, it was a material mock-up or, um, a, um.
It'd be like a site conditions assessment.
Yes, yes, but I would, I would think most of them would be virtual.
Uh, I can volunteer, but I couldn't start until after the Fourth of July.
Got it. And I don't think we would be starting anytime. I don't think we'd be starting probably until August.
That was my question, Elizabeth. So, starting in August. And so I could volunteer for that.
Wonderful, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chair Walker.
Elizabeth, can I, I just ask a quick question? Sure. Um, for the design review on the twenty-fourth, um, looks like we have a, a heavy agenda for that. Uh, do you know when we'll have those presentations um, available to, to see beforehand?
Uh, for the design review portion of the meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Um, I can ask, um, Joe-
I can ask Joe Cornish if we can get an exact date on those presentations. I will be posting an agenda on Friday. I don't think all of the presentations will be into us by then. So I can follow up with Joe Cornish and Chelsea Blanchard to see when those will be available.
Okay.
And let you know.
So I'll ask if there's any chance by like the Wednesday prior night. I know that's a really tall ask, but if that's at all possible.
Nope, that's okay. We will, that is a nice goal to have.
Yeah, I'm gonna amplify that and e- even, even if, you know, somebody says I still have three more slides that I'm gonna add later, it at least gives design review commissioners enough time to familiarize themselves with the content.
Great.
They're not doing it live in the meeting.
Understood. We will work on that request for you all. And that's all I have for this evening.
Any commissioners have anything on their mind? Seeing or hearing from anybody? I'm gonna entertain a motion to adjourn. Ms. Hart, thank you. Somebody else who's unmuted, give me a second.
A second. Justine.
Thank you, Justine. And that's a voice vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, anyone opposed? Thank you. Good night, everybody.
Good night.